All right.
Okay, all right, our college meeting to order this is the May 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We are participating remotely this evening under an order from the governor about relating to holding public meetings remotely because of the coronavirus. And so as a preliminary to this, because we're doing that, I have this little script I have to read. So please be with me. First thing I'd like to do is confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So I'll start with the board members first and just acknowledge when I call your name, please. Beth Casavant.
Present.
John LeBeau.
Here, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Kane.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
John Samia.
Present.
And obviously I'm here. Mr. Mizikar.
Present.
Alan. I can see you. Okay, can you hear us now?
Oh, sorry about that. I couldn't find my unmute button. Yes, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Petka.
I'm here.
Mr. Rowley.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
Okay, do we have Mr. Popo, Steven Popo?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin Mizikard. So anyone that's participating via phone in order to unmute yourself, you're going to have to press star and then the number six. And then after you're done speaking, we request that you press star six again. So if your name is called and you're on the telephone, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, Mr. Popo.
So, sir, my name is John Bradley. I'm from NITCO, representing NITCO in place of Steve Popo.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. And do we have Waldemar Gormeco Lopez?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, this open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public body, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public asset access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment under the public hearing section of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Hangouts as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to share screen on your computer unless asked by the chairperson or a staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're now going to be moving to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then a second. Please hold your, until your name is called. Also, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Again, remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking and background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present or speak, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking and background noise. Please be clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions for our section with the public hearings. After members have spoken, the chair will allow the, or ask for public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Or any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name again before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Okay, so move on to item one. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants? Mrs. Casavant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second roll call vote. Mrs. Casavant.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 28th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Casavant.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, next item is announcements and reports. I actually have several, so bear with me. The first one and probably the most important is that because of the of the coronavirus pandemic and social distancing protocols that are in place, Governor Baker and Secretary of Veterans of Farias Franchesco Urina has ordered that to be no public municipal events held on Memorial Day, May 25th. In place of traditional events, the town is producing a pre-recorded Memorial Day program to honor the fallen. The program of ear Memorial Day on local public access channels and town social media platforms. Flags will still be placed upon the graves by volunteers wearing appropriate PPE and observe observing social distancing protocols. An official release on this and more information will be posted on the website and social media tomorrow. The next item is that the the town's wastewater consultants Weston and Sampson, along with our contractor, National Water Main Cleaning, is going to be continuing investigation of the sanitary sewer system, primarily the sewer lines, which will include both daytime and nighttime work beginning this evening. This work is dependent on seasonal conditions and must be completed before the beginning of the summer. The locations for both day and night work are listed on the town website. Next, we have work on Route 20 that is going to begin, some work, prep work has started already, but the contractor JL Raymaker and Sons is going to begin construction on the sewer system update upgrades as part of the Phase One Route 20 car to sewer upgrades. The actual work is going to start on May 18th, 2020 and will continue through May 2021. The project includes the installation of new sewer mains on Arrowood, Lake Street, from Arrowood Drive to Route 20, along Route 20 from Lake Street to the Worcester City Line. The pump station on Arrowood is going to be upgraded in Route 20 and Lakeside Drive will also be part of this project. Construction will begin on Route 20. We're not expecting any disruption to the sewer service. The work is going to take place during daytime hours with one lane of traffic to be open in each direction. So I would suggest if you can avoid Route 20 around that area, it might be a good idea. Central Mass Mosquito Control has announced the 2020 spray schedule that's going to begin in June. If you would like to opt out of spraying, you can fill out a request online. That information is on the town website and you can get more details on that. And finally, yard waste collection is resuming next week, May 18th through May 22nd. Again, yard waste must be in paper lawn and leaf bags. They should not be overweighted and they need to be able to small bundles of branches will also be collected if they are no larger than three inches of diameter, cut in four foot lengths and securely tied into bundles. And again, we ask, as with the trash, to please make sure that you have that out by 7:00 AM. Okay, does anybody else have any other announcements this evening? Okay, Mr. Mizikar, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. DePaulo, and I will share my screen in order to do that. First, under the town manager's report, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just wanted to advise town voters that we're encouraging everyone to participate in the annual town election, of which Election Day is June 16th. We're encouraging everyone to participate to the greatest extent possible by mail. And in order to be able to participate by mail, you must request a ballot in writing from the town clerk's office. You can visit the town clerk's page on the website to request that. You'll need to sign a single one-page form and submit it into the town clerk's office. It can be scanned in and sent via email and then they will mail a ballot ballot to you, which must be received in the clerk's office by Election Day. So we've had over 350 voters request those already and we're encouraging everyone to do so to ease congestion and other complications given the current environment during the election on June 16th. So please take some time, fill out that request and submit it into the clerk. I will now move on to my COVID-19 update for the board. As, as of today, May 12th, 2020, we currently have 232 positive cases that have been identified over that 55-day period with an average of 4.218 cases per day. Over the previous seven-day period from April 9th, excuse me, it should be April 29th through May 5th, we had 49 cases, seven per day. In May 6th through May 12th, the current seven-day period, we had 22 cases, 3.142 cases per day. We have a small sample size relatively, but we do, we are cautiously optimistic about that decline over the last two seven-day periods, which were around seven cases per day. And we are currently under the total 55-day average case per day of 4.28. So that's positive news. In context of the total population of roughly 37,000 residents, that's a infection rate of 0.63%. And this evening, Mr. Chairman, although difficult to share, I think it's important that we share the total number of deaths that have been identified on official death certificates within the town of Shrewsbury as being caused by COVID-19. To date, from March 16th, actually through today, not May 7th, we updated this this evening. There have been 28 total deaths. 22 of those deaths will be considered clustered with an over 10 cases at a single address. There have been total, total of 70 COVID-19 and, and non-COVID-19 deaths during that same time period, just for context. So with regards to the positive case count to death ratio, there's been a 12.06% ratio of the 28 deaths to the 232 positive cases. Within context of the population, that's a death rate of less than 1/10 of 1%. So I know, expressing on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, entire town staff, our heartfelt sympathies out there to everyone that has lost someone, whether it's from COVID-19 or otherwise during this time period. We just thought it was important to share that this evening with the members of the community. Moving on with regards to the status of town buildings, staffing and our reopening plan. This evening, I'm announcing the town buildings will remain closed to the public at least through May 26th. And the primary reason for that is that the state's reopening advisory committee will be republishing a report on May 18th. That report will inform our ability to both as an employer and open businesses up to public participation back in them. So the state reopening advisory committee has identified four phases in their process. The first phase, which will begin on May 18th. During that process, employers, including the town of Shrewsbury, will be able to, will be required to self-certify if their type of work environment falls within a particular category that's identified during one of those phases. From our perspective, the town will have both a management and enforcement role as well as a roles of an employer in order to be able to ensure that our employees are safe, both from each other and members of the public whenever they're visiting and conducting business within the various town buildings. Management enforcement will primarily still fall to the police department and to the Board of Health. And certainly down the road, as we can consider our abilities through this reopening plan and advice that we receive through the state guidelines, we'll have some tough decisions ahead as we're nearing and actually beyond the original application deadline, or excuse me, application period for the summer recreation program and summer camps. So we'll continue to keep the board informed of all actions and inform the public as soon as possible, whenever we're able to reopen our building doors to you and whenever we begin to have more staffing within the building. Just to note, we currently are operating on an extremely limited number of staff within town buildings. But I'm very proud of how staff have adapted to this remote environment and the utilization of technology on a day-to-day basis to both interact with each other and with the public in order to continue to provide the services that we need to. So that concludes my report this evening and I'll stop sharing my screen.
Okay, thank you. And does anybody have any questions for the manager on his report?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
One question might be more of a management observation, Kevin, but have you found any positions, as I know some businesses have, that have actually experienced a higher level of productivity or efficiency working remotely? There's none of the daily interruptions in certain settings for certain positions and they're actually in a position to focus much more consistently. Have you found any situations like that within our organization?
We certainly have and it varies, of course, depending on the role. Some of our roles are extremely public-facing and when those roles are, you know, primarily interacting on a face-to-face basis, you know, in certain operations, of course, like the senior center in the library, it's been quite a challenge. But in other positions that are perhaps more administrative or, you know, our management staff, including myself, to be quite honest, Mr. Kane, not having the constant, you know, face-to-face interactions, while I certainly miss it, there has been opportunities where we've been more focused and more efficient along those lines.
Have you found any instances where you might have a position or two that revolve two, three days in the office, two, three days out of the office? Not only during this transition phase, because you actually have to be very protective and almost husband some resources. If everybody comes back roaring once and then we have some type of a relapse, we have that many more people exposed that to date have been thus far protected. Have you had any thoughts along those lines?
Yeah, we certainly would be very protective, especially within the early phases of the reopening plan, you know, from staff and public standpoint. But I do see long-term opportunities to both alleviate some of the density and congestion within the town hall, even in the latter stages and beyond. Perhaps this forced environment of remote communication and participation on a day-to-day basis has taught us some lessons about the actual type of staff and number of staff we need to have within the buildings to, you know, be fully productive. So we do plan to identify many long-term opportunities that will hopefully benefit the town during this hopefully short period that's ending soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, if there be none, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is a public hearing with John Bradley of NITCO LLC DBA NITCO Material Handling Solutions, 230 Cherry Street for a Class One license. Mr. Bradley, would you like to say anything in regards to this application?
If I couldn't, I definitely would. Thank you.
Certainly.
NITCO has been at 230 Cherry Street for many years. We were formerly known as Northland Industrial Truck and our previous owner retired at the end of 2019. He's actually had a Class One license since about 2011 through the town. And when he retired, we obviously had to get a new tax ID, IN, et cetera, et cetera. So that became now and boy, hence the reason why we are reapplying at this time under the, under our new legal name of NITCO. The reason for the Class One license is so that we can ask the state for dealer plates and we handle a line of industrial street sweepers that we bring out to do at various sites across the state for demonstration purposes with various DPWs, et cetera. And these obviously have to get on, on the public roadways at some point, so we do need a set of plates to do that. That is the reason why we have come before the board to reapply for a Class One license.
Okay. Okay, as far as the operation goes, it's continuing as it's historically been done at that site, correct?
That is correct. Nothing has changed in our business operation at all.
Okay, hours, et cetera, all the same.
Correct.
Okay. All right, does any members of the board, do any members of the board have any questions or comments to Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
During the years that such a license was held by the prior owner, were there any issues or incidents regarding violations of the conditions of that license?
Not from any of the reports that we received from the department heads when we sent out requests for input on the license application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Yes, Mr. Samia.
On the certificate of insurance, can we have confirmation that the policies have been renewed? The certificate included in the materials, the period of coverage elapsed on 4/30.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Did you hear that?
So I have a copy of the certificate of liability insurance with me here in the folder. I will verify that this will be updated.
Okay, thank you. Can you get that into the office tomorrow?
This, this actually, the one I have is dated as of March 9th, 2020.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Okay, this, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who is in the, in the virtual audience who'd like to make a comment or ask a question? If so, would you please identify yourself, name and address, please?
Yes, we'd like to make a comment. My, my name's Christopher Lund. I'm at 235 Cherry Street, across the street from NITCO.
Okay, sure, Mr. Lund, go right ahead.
Thank you. We have several issues with their application. But I wanted to ask again, their, their Northland JCB on all their signage. It's, they have had a Class One since 2011. When did that expire?
It would have expired. Well, technically, I guess it, it would have expired at the end of the year, I believe, at December 31st, I believe. I could be wrong. Valerie?
Mr. Chairman, it'd be January 1st, 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, so their, their current Class One license, the one they had current expired on in January of 2020, okay. And that Class One was for JCB equipment. Is that correct or fair to say?
If, if, if that, if I may answer that, it is actually for Bravo Street Industrial Street Sweeper. It is not necessarily for the JCB equipment because we do not, we do not put the dealer plates on our JCB equipment for demo purposes normally. It is normally just for our street sweeping line.
Okay, however, your current location is listed as a dealer location for JCB equipment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're going to take issue as not having a Class One license to be a dealer for JCB equipment at the current location. And then I want to get into issues with their application. Step one of their base application, they were to specify whether they were, wanted to apply as a Class One or a Class Two. They wrote both down. So we're taking issue with that.
Okay, that was just a clerical. It's been advertised as a Class One license and that is what you're seeking.
We're also taking issue as, I think somebody else did on the board, relative to handing in an expired insurance policy as part of the application forms. Our next point of contention is their Form 53 submittal. Statement six, where they say their principal business at that current location is for the selling of new equipment, both forklifts and street sweepers. We've emailed the board tonight, as well as the assistant town manager and town planner, pictures, plus these discrepancies in their application of the fact that that location shows all sorts of used equipment and equipment under repair and much more so than new equipment out on the lot. Further, the lot currently is overburdened. They have equipment out on the grass, not on the parking lot. That'll turn me towards their site plan submittal as part of their application. But we do not agree based on the pictures. But we do not agree based on the pictures that their primary business at this location is new vehicle sales. And then relative to the site plan they submitted, that is not a parking site plan showing where the equipment's going to be located, where their dumpster is located, all per your submittal requirements for that particular, for your board. So we're taking issue with their site plan submittal. And then we're also taking issue with used car dealer and garage license regulations per this license. The list of regulations that's part of this packet, Items Five and Six, dealer conducting repairs on site, we're questioning whether they have a garage license. And then not allowing disabled or vehicles, inoperative vehicles on site at the same time. Those are some of the discrepancies we see in reviewing their application. Further, I'm missing this point where that location is the primary, the primary product is a Bravo sweeper, scarab sweeper per their application forms in the letter of, from manufacturer, Bravo is the manufacturer's letter they submitted as part of their packet, where a Bravo sweeper is blue or white, or scarab is blue or white. And the majority of the vehicles, there are no blue sweepers on this location, and they're all JCB, the majority is JCB product. One other big, huge discrepancy we saw in the application is the copy of the bond provided is for their EZ Pass account, not this municipal license. So that's the bulk of my issues with their application and them receiving successfully tonight a license for a lot of equipment, bonds, insurances, all sorts of things that don't add up.
Okay, all right, let me try to answer a couple of those questions. First of all, they are not required to have a garage license because they're doing, they're not, as we understand it in the application, previously was that the, the work that's being done in the garage is on their equipment or equipment that they service. So they do not need a garage license. We changed that requirement. It's got to be close to a dozen years ago, so they do not need a garage license. A Class One license covers the sale of new vehicles and the sale of used vehicles. So they do have the ability to display and sell used vehicles under their Class One license per the state law. The bond, actually, I didn't catch that when I first went over it, and I went back and looked after I saw your letter. You are correct. I don't know what that's about, but a Class One license does not require a bond. A Class Two license requires a bond, so for whatever reason that's there, it's not relevant. Let me see if I got the rest of it. Generally, they're not applying, their Class One license allows them to sell any new vehicle that they're licensed for. We don't typically require a Class One license to be specific to a brand. So the license covers any new equipment that they sell. However, I will ask Mr. Bradley about the, let's see if I got everything. Mr. Bradley, is the site plan that you presented the same one that had been used in the past?
It is.
Okay, and all of the equipment that's there is either the for your storage for repair or for sale? Is that correct or am I wrong?
That is correct. The majority of the equipment that the gentleman would be referring to would be trade-in, like forklift equipment, that sometimes we do keep it outside until we can get it in and get it reconditioned or sell it to a wholesaler. So that is the majority of it, that is outside of our building at this point, which there are no licensing involved, there are no states, there's no, there's no type of of transaction that takes place on a lift truck, that it is, you know, street legal, et cetera, et cetera. So the equipment that's outside would be that, or it would be larger pieces, as you mentioned, the JCB equipment and the street sweeping equipment would be up on our parking lot.
Okay, can you address the issue of vehicles being stored on the grass? I think there's either a special permit or a variance that was allowed for at least to display the equipment that's out close to Route 20. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And we do, we do have some pieces. We bring them in for new inventory. They are unloaded outside, and the reason we would put some on the grass is just to make room if we had tractor trailers coming in that have to get to our delivery dock at that point. So that would be the reason we would have some on the grass. We do have a bridge down the other end of our building that we we move the, we transition the equipment to, but generally when we have new JCB come in, they're unloaded at a ground prop situation outside, and then we move them onto the lawn area as they sit there so that we can maneuver the 18-wheelers that come into our parking lot to access our loading dock.
Okay, is there anything in your special permit or variance that was on that property that would prohibit you from parking on the grass? I don't have it.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, Mr. Lund, I'm not sure I got to all of your questions. The issue with the the insurance certificate was addressed. It just, in the process, apparently, the insurance was renewed during the midst of this application process. And we will have a new copy of the renewed insurance tomorrow. So I know you raised a lot of issues. Are there any that I didn't address?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to come back to this issue with Class One. Chapter 422 of Mass Law, a Class One license is to be given to somebody that has written authorization of self-product directly from the manufacturer. The affidavit they provided from Bravo is for Bravo sweepers, Matthew sweepers, scarab sweepers. There may be a scarab or two out in that lot. There is no other equipment from this company present on site. JCB, there is no Class One license for JCB equipment. And then further, it does not give them the right to sell, repair, or fix used equipment at that location. That's Class Two. And that requires a bond.
I don't have the law in front of you, and I really don't want to debate with you, but I, my opinion is, and my understanding of the law over the years, is if you have a Class One license, you can sell used vehicles. It's part of the business. You take them and trade, and so you're able to sell them and service those. That has been across every Class One license that I've been involved with in the town. Our licenses, you are correct, to be a new car dealer or a Class One dealer, you have to be a dealer with a manufacturer of whatever, cars, roadworthy equipment. However, our license that we issue is not specific to a brand. So as long as they have a contract with one of the, or a dealership with one of the companies that they sell, those, that license is legitimate. It's no different than any of the other car dealers that, or any of the other Class One dealers in town. So it, that's just the way, it's my understanding, that's the way the law is written, and I don't know what to tell you on that.
Yeah, it's through you, the chair. I would just, I have the law in front of me, and I'm reading it verbatim. The seller of a pair of used equipment is secondary to that manufacturer. So if Bravo equipment is what they are a dealership of, just like a Toyota dealership or a Mitsubishi dealership, yes, you are allowed to take back in Toyota equipment if you are a Toyota dealership. You're not allowed to sell a used vehicles from other manufacturers and put them on your lot. That's the difference between a Class One and a Class Two according to the law. And my other issue with this grass thing is they might have received a variance for signage and display vehicles out by Route 20, but this is clearly not that location, which is on the edge of the parking lot. And further, I would have you look at the pictures. There are several JCB forklifts with their arms up in display like they constantly are. Those vehicles don't move. Those lifts are up. That is to showcase new equipment at that location on the grass that is not moved so that they can put a truck or unload equipment, which I don't think is a proper justification anyways. You shouldn't be moving gasoline-powered or diesel-powered equipment onto grass to manipulate your parking lot. That's inappropriate for a multitude of reasons.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I'm going to go back to the used car. If you're a new car, a Class One dealer, you can take any brand of vehicle in trade. It does not only have to be the brand that you sell, and you have the right to sell that as part of your business. We could, looking at the site, you probably could make the argument that there's more used equipment there than new equipment. But that still does not prevent them from selling used equipment. Mr. Bradley, let me ask you a question. When, you don't display a lot, correct me if I'm wrong, but as opposed to a car dealership or a major truck dealership, you don't have a lot of vehicles, new vehicles on the lot, right? You either sell what you have on the lot, or you water something, and when somebody purchases it, is that correct?
That is correct. We sell directly to business. We are not a retail establishment where people walk in off the street and buy a vehicle, unless they're coming onto the lot to do a demonstration for a company. And that's the reason, again, a lift truck is not a street legal vehicle. So there are no licenses that you can go and get a buy car. But the equipment that is on the premises is either equipment we've brought in for inventory so that we can make a quick delivery to a customer's facility, or it's equipment that's boughted in for a customer.
Okay, can you address the issue of, the only, explain that the only road legal vehicles that you sell are the sweepers, is that correct?
The Bravo line of sweepers is, just like any DPW may have an Elgin sweeper, et cetera, where you would be, that would go out on the public roadway. So that would need, for us in the case to demonstrate a vehicle like that, we would need to attach a dealer plate card in order to be able to do that.
Okay, the JCB or JVC, whatever the name of it is, any of those other brands, the Lulls or the Flock trucks, are those, are those not typically registered vehicles, right?
No, towns will go and get plates for some of their construction equipment. I guess that is probably up to a town to do that. You can get a certificate of title for a piece of construction equipment. But the lift truck equipment, none of it meets any type of crash test criteria. And you cannot book for registry. There's not a title available to register a vehicle.
Okay. Let me just ask, is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, board members, anybody have any follow-up questions on this? I know a lot of issues came up on this particular application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it seems from my earlier conversation that none of the department heads had any matters with this from an operational standpoint. So it seems like there may be some perhaps scrivener issues and paperwork that needs to be updated given a time lapse or something along those lines. Other than that, I think the matters raised are easily dealt with by the simple fact that there is someone's interpretation of statute versus the way it has practically been enforced throughout a period of time of legally licensed activities without any issues, once again. So I'm perfectly comfortable moving forward, provided prior to the issuance of the license, physically to the person, that the myriad of scrivener issues and updated insurance, et cetera, simply be rectified.
Okay, Mr. Lund, did you have another comment?
Yep.
I had to tell from looking at the computer screen.
Yeah, the Class One is, your principal business is the sale of new motor vehicles and the sale of second-hand motor vehicles are incidental or secondary to. I'm going to state that for the record, because that's listed as Class One definition under Chapter 422. Class Two is the selling of second-hand vehicles. I'd then ask, what is the purpose of these licenses? If the fact that on this lot, it's clear via the pictures taken tonight that the multitude of vehicles listed that are sitting on that site are largely secondary vehicles, not new. And then further, what's the purpose of the site plan if it's completely illegible and does not show vehicle locations or any other emergency vehicle access as part of this licensing to make sure that the folks working there are safe and the people that have to respond are safe?
Okay. Okay, I don't think we're going to resolve the first class, I mean, the Class One and Class Two issue this evening. At least not to have satisfaction, but I hear what you're saying. Does anybody else have anything, any comments on this hearing? Okay, then, having nothing new, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, again, we have to have a roll call vote. Mrs. Cassman?
Aye.
Lebo?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Mr. DePaulo, aye.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board this evening? We do have to get that insurance certificate to make sure it's current. I'm not sure if there's anything else that we need to get. Valerie, is there anything else that you picked up from this hearing, that, any other information that the applicant would need to provide?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman, just the updated certificate.
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman, just the updated certificate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board? Anyone? Act, not act?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything, any other further discussion from board members? Okay, there being none, Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Samia? Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay, Mr. Bradley, you need to get that insurance certificate into the office. And you'll be all set.
Okay, I will be at my corporate facility tomorrow and make sure I get it done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to our next public hearing, which is with Waldemar Lopez, the owner of Gray Car Auto Center Repair and Towing, Inc., DBA, gray car, forty-seven half turnpike for a Class Two license and a garage license. Mr. Lopez, are you here? Mr. Lopez? He was here.
If he's on the phone, maybe he needs those directions on how to unmute himself again.
Kevin, what do you do for that? Kevin?
I just need to press star and then six.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Okay, you're here.
I am.
Okay, so you are applying for a Class Two license and garage license. Would you like to tell us anything about the business?
Yes.
Okay, what are you going to be doing there?
Just buying and selling vehicles and repair once in a while for some customer and also for myself.
Okay, what are the hours of operation going to be?
Okay, it's got to be Monday to Saturday, eight to eight P.M. And Sunday night to four P.M.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to come back to that in a minute, but and how many vehicles are you looking to have on the site?
Yeah, for seller, I'll be asking for fifteen vehicles and for weight repair, like parking.
Okay. Questions from members? Do you have anything else you want to add, Mr. Lopez, at the moment?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, board members, questions? Okay, Mr. Lopez, you know that, that site is allowed to have the operation that you're talking about through a variance that was, that was granted back over twenty years ago. Are you aware that there's some restrictions on that property?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a copy of that?
I don't have it with me in the hands right now.
But you have seen it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you repeat again the question, what you say, if I have it? I misunderstood a little bit.
You're aware there were some restrictions on that property from the zoning board, correct?
Correct, we send them over.
Okay, so just so we're clear here, you're allowed through the zoning board to have fifteen vehicles to be displayed or stored, so you can only have fifteen total. Okay, okay, and your hours of operation, Monday through Friday, a fine, the zoning board allowed till nine P.M. What did you say you wanted to do on Saturday?
Saturday, seven, eight, three.
Okay, right now it looks like you're only allowed to be open until six on Saturday?
Okay.
Okay, you can go to the zoning board to get that changed if you want, but you'll change, and then Sundays?
Sunday, I have it with night to four.
Okay, I think we'll need to check with the building inspector because this is, this, this opinion is silent on Sundays. So I don't know if that means you can be open on Sundays or not, but, okay, we have to check that.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, any questions from members of the board? This is a public hearing, if anybody in the public would like to be heard on this?
Hello, yes, I'd like to speak if I could.
Okay, could you identify yourself and give us your address, please?
Sure, I'm the owner of the property. I represent AGW Group. My name is Stereo Gianopolis. I just want to make a couple of comments regarding this property here. I've been the owner there for approximately ten years. This has been a repair shop and also a gas station at one point, but not since. And car sales for, I don't know, forty, fifty years or so. All we're trying to do here is just transfer the actual license with the existing restrictions that were put on through that variance that you people have there in line. And hopefully, I mean, it is a used car lot and hopefully it should cover usage on a Sunday during, because it is a busy day as far as retail car sales.
Okay, that, I think we'll need to check with the building inspector just to make sure that nothing has changed on that. Like I said, the Board of Appeals decision does not say anything about Sundays. It doesn't say you have to be closed, but it doesn't say you can be open, so we'll check on that. But I understand what you're saying. Basically, Mr. Lopez wants to take over operation of the business as the new owner, basically the same way that had been done in the past. Okay.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to be heard on this? Okay, board members, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing. Oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't quick enough off the dime before. Why do we assume it can't be open on Sunday? Zoning in the area, why would we think it's allowed?
Kane, you were completely garbled.
It's tough to hear.
Yeah, Mr. Kane, could you try that again? Does anybody, we may have lost them, I don't know.
I think he asked, why would it be a problem for them to be open on Sundays when other businesses in the area are open on Sundays and it's consistent with zoning? I think that's what I got.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize there. My question was that, why would we assume the negative? If it's silent, why wouldn't we assume it's allowed?
I just want to make sure that he's all set and he doesn't get in trouble.
If it doesn't prohibit it in the license, how would he get in trouble? I'm just asking the question.
I don't know, it's the same question I had. I don't have a problem with Sundays either.
It strikes me, if he's in an area where such activity is ongoing on a Sunday, then why wouldn't we just assume that that's something that would be allowed because it is not prohibited within the decision?
I suppose we could. Does anybody else have any comments? Someone else? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Paulo, aye. Okay, Mr. Lopez, you're all set. Pick up the license and the, well, how does he get his license?
Hello?
All right, hello?
Yes.
Is that you, Mr. Lopez?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we voted to grant you the license. I'm just trying to find out how you get it because Town Hall, the building is closed. Valerie, do we mail it to him?
I had to unmute. Does he have to get a special permit?
I don't think so. There's already a decision on this, has he? I thought this was the one that they said that they didn't need to get it. It was already.
Okay, yeah, and so in that case, he can get in touch with Alex tomorrow, and I believe if it's, she will mail it to him.
Okay.
After it's been paid.
I'm pretty sure I saw something in the emails going back and forth that they said they didn't need to get a new one because of the variance, so.
Okay, yeah, so he can just get in touch with Alex and she'll most likely mail it out to him.
Okay, okay, Mr. Lopez, you're all set.
Thank you so much for pushing that.
Okay, take care. Okay, our next item of business is a continued public hearing with Victor De Oliverio of Icar Auto. We received the request to continue the hearing till the next meeting because there's still some outstanding issues with the site plan. So we have a motion to continue the hearing until the, what's the next meeting, Val, the twenty-sixth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So we can have a motion to continue the hearing till May twenty-sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Hi, sorry.
It's okay, Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay, next order of business is a continued public hearing with Keith Lindham of Eighty-One Clinton Pub LLC. My understanding is that that is also being requested to be continued because of issues getting their permitting and stuff done because of the COVID situation. So we have a motion to continue that hearing to May twenty-sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Paulo, aye. Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing to consider laying out a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road as public ways pursuant to MGL Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-two. We have a presentation by the engineering department and a public comment will be received if there's any after questions from members of the board. Mr. Holland, are you going to make that presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff Holland, DPW Director. The subdivision of Nelson Point, which included the previously private portion of Nelson Point Road, it goes from Lake Street down to number fourteen Nelson Point Road and the new subdivision street, Point Road, ready for road acceptance at town meeting. We, engineering department has done a punch list. There is minor punch list items remaining. One is one bound, which is located within a driveway, needs to be installed. Some upgrades to, or some re-looming and seeding. And then just prior to town meeting, the final street sweeping and cleaning of the drainage system. The as-built plans have been submitted and approved along with the road acceptance plans with the legal description. The subdivision includes four drainage easements. Two are for outlet pipes off of Nelson Point Road and two are for small, two small detention basins which are located off of Point Road. The utilities here are public water and a public sewer. The sewer is via a common force main from each of the units. And that's it.
Hello?
Mo, you have to unmute yourself.
Never thought we'd hear that said publicly.
Mo, you have to unmute yourself.
Time for the vice chair to take over.
Okay, Mo, you need to unmute yourself. Okay.
I knew what I had to do. I was, I was, I went into the drive to get a document and I couldn't figure out how to get out. Okay, so, Mr. Holland, are you saying these roads are ready to be accepted? You would support us voting to accept these layouts and making these public this evening?
Yes, I am. It's historic that the final street sweeping, the final cleaning of the drainage is done just prior to town meeting, which is normal.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, we do have a letter that came in from Mr. Flynn on nine Nelson Point. It appears, I don't know if you saw this letter, Mr. Holland. It appears he's asking for a stub off the water main to the edge of the property. Did you see that?
I have not.
It just came in, it just came in this evening, so.
Did you say number, did you say number nine Nelson Point Road?
That's the note I wrote, yes.
Okay.
Can you check into that? Because that's what he asked. It was like two sentences in the letter, unless somebody. Can anybody see that email?
Yes, I can see the email. Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
My name is Lawrence Flynn, Jr. at nine Nelson Point. I'm at a butter. As part of this public way, what are the chances of getting a town water connection set up at the curb to property? The water main runs right past my driveway. Thanks, Larry Flynn.
Okay.
So what I will, I know there is a sewer stub that is to there. I will have to ask to see if there's a water stub. Unfortunately, I only have an eleven by seventeen in front of me, so it's, my bifocals just aren't allowing me to be able to read it or not, but I can find out.
Okay, board members, any questions, comments? Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on this?
What the fuck are you doing?
What is who doing? Okay, I don't know what that was. Okay, then, Mr. Holland? Okay, then, Mr. Holland, we have a document in, in our, in the middle that reported the Board of Selectment on the matter of laying out and making public Point Road. And we need to vote on that?
Yes, it's actually a portion of Nelson Point Road and Point Road.
Okay. We'll, we'll need to, we'll need to correct this because unless it's something I missed in the, in the drive, I only see something for Point Road. We're gonna have to sign this electronically tomorrow anyway, so we can fix the document.
Which document are you looking at, Mr. Chairman?
This one right here. It, it says, it was in the package with the paperwork. It says the report of the Board of Selectment on the matter of laying, of laying out and making public a Point Road. And it says, having had the public meeting and making public Point Road, reports that the roadway known as Point Road should be laid out and made public at the annual town meeting. But it doesn't say anything about Nelson Point, that portion of, so should that be added on to this?
Yes, it should. The reason, the reason being is the original subdivision only was a subdivision for Point Road, but in order for the, the us to have access to Point Road, that would require us to go on to Nelson Point Road and that can't be private. So we can't have a public street to a private street back to a public. So we had to that Nelson Point Road also become public.
Okay, so then it would be the laying out and making public of Point Road and a portion of Nelson Point Road?
That is correct.
Okay, so if there's no other questions from the board, could I have a motion to that effect?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay. Anything else on that, Mr. Holland? We're all set?
We're all set, thank you.
Okay, next order of business is a presentation by Jeff Tolland and Nick Repeska as the Highway Division Manager regarding the FY 21 Snow and Ice Operation Recap. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Holland, DPW Director, I have Nick Repeska, Highway Division Manager, and I'm gonna let him issue his report on, we are fortunate to have an extremely mild winter this year, though we did have some significant snowfall in December, but I'll let Nick give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jeff. I'm just gonna share my screen right now. Okay, thank you again for having me here tonight. Just gonna go through quick synopsis of how the winter season went. The 2019, 2020 snow season was somewhat of a typical or average season. Our largest event was 17 inches at the beginning of December. There were long-duration ice events that were problematic. Also, what we would consider textbook regular plowing events that go according to plan. Other small events include what we call one-and-dones. Treatments of the road where black ice, a very minor snowfall occur, and we make our way through town just one time. There we go. The total snow was 36 and a half inches. The total for equipment rental or snowplow contractors was $177,761. The total for DPW overtime was $115,356. The total tonnage of salt use was 2,438.5 tons. The total liquid deicer used was 9,207 gallons. So during the icing events, the Highway Division typically uses eight trucks covering eight sections of town and each truck covers a particular public facility that's on or near their individual route. We normally staff one loader operator at the salt shed and two mechanics at the garage. The Highway Division has undertaken an all-salt on paved roads and we utilize computerized spread controls and calibrated all of our salt spreaders to 250 pounds per lane mile. We are using less salt per lane mile than we have in the past in achieving the same results. The average amount of salt to treat all the paved roads and parking lots one time is approximately 65 ton. The trucks are using one to two loads of salt for root as opposed to three to four loads when we used a sand-salt mix. This change has resulted in a significant decrease in the sweeping in the spring. In 2018, 780 ton of material was picked up by the sweepers in the spring. And in 2019, 472 ton of material was picked up by the sweepers. The same applies to storm drain cleaning. In 2018, 464 ton was cleaned out and in 2019, 315 ton was cleaned. So the Highway Division utilizes all DPW staff. The total approximately 24 vehicles on an average. And we average 30 pieces of contract equipment for plowing events. While all roots are covered by equipment, one breakdown or one piece not being available is detrimental to the operation. There were times that we had to have myself and our woman plow a root and times one of our mechanics had to leave the garage to operate a plow. Sidewalks are also a challenge to complete. We utilize seasonal staff to complete this task. Although they are reliable, they're not familiar with the roads and the layout of the town to accurately complete the task without incurring some lawn damage or missed areas. This has been, excuse me, there has been an increase in calls for the sidewalk prioritization. With limited staff and only two machines, we address the areas to the best of our ability. I have requested Mass D O T to take over a portion of the sidewalks on the Route 9 Lakewood Business District for the past two seasons to no avail. With the current staff and miles of sidewalks that we plow, the request for additional sidewalks to our route is not feasible this time. So our mechanics staff every snow and ice event while our drivers are on the road. Led by Joel Campbell, they're tasked with keeping our fleet moving during the worst events. Sometimes they assist our contractors to make the basic repairs and keep them on the road as well. Some of the issues that arise are wipers, lights, missing or broken cutting edges, missing bolts, blown hydraulic hoses, flat tires, and stuck equipment, just to name a few. Some of the larger repairs have taken place during the season were as follows. We had an alternator and a water pump on Truck 17, a steering box on Truck 12, steering box and conveyor motor on Truck 22, an exhaust burner for the regeneration system on Truck 20. The conveyor chain was replaced in Truck 5 and a trip edge on Truck 17's plow. These larger repairs generally take place after the event is concluded. Highway has continued, excuse me, continued to test the use of salt brine pretreatment applications approximately 24 hours prior to snow events. This has been in partnership with the City of Worcester. We have identified several main roads and sprayed several times with positive results. This certainly could be another tool in our toolbox to limit the bonding of snow and ice to our pavements and buying time on the front end of storm when deploying equipment could be challenging. Acquiring our own salt brine generator would be advantageous at this time, but the cost is upwards of $90,000 for a full installation. We're always looking to advance our operation of snow and ice management. We purchased segmented cutting edges for the underbody scrapers to follow the contours of the road and achieve a clearer road surface. We've tried different types of deicing liquid product that has molasses base with calcium chloride. The product is sprayed on the salt and it discharged out of the spreader. The molasses allows the salt to stick to the road and reduces bounce and scatter when the salt is applied. The computerized ground speed controllers automatically download to a computer at the highway garage and report the salt usage and liquid usage for cost and reordering purposes. A real-time road and air temperature sensor was installed into Truck 1 to monitor pavement temperatures and moderate changing conditions to better manage snow and ice events. So in closing, I would like to recognize the ongoing cooperation with the Public Facilities Division to coordinate the clearing and deicing of all the parking lots. Superintendent of Schools Joe Sawyer for his communication with the schools, closings and delays. And finally, I'd like to thank all of our contractors, Water, Sewer and Parks Division and our part-time drivers for the continued assistance managing winter storms. I would especially like to thank Ed, Nancy, Joel, John, Chad, Mike, Biggs, Tim, Ben, Billy, AJ and Tony and Jeff. That's our highway team for the dedication and the hard work through the winter. At this time available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions from members of the board? Comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
That was an interesting report. I was just wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about the partnership that we have with Worcester as far as putting the brine treatment on the roads? And you mentioned how we don't have our own vehicle to put the brine on the road. So are we using a Worcester vehicle? I just was interested in a little bit more information there.
Oh, sure. So I think it was last season, we, we actually owned a piece of equipment. We, it's a dual-use piece of equipment. It's a water tank mounted on one of our trucks that has the spray bar and the motor and everything to apply the salt brine. So I made a couple of calls around and Mr. Jim Kempden is the street director down for the city and I said, would you be interested in helping us out? And he said, come down. So what we do is we bring them like a truckload of salt and it was around eight ton, which is equivalent to about 7,000 gallons of brine. So I can get like 10 loads of salt brine from them for bringing them the salt to make it. And he's been, they've been very, very accommodating with us.
That's great, thank you. I wouldn't have known that, that you were kind of bringing the raw materials and then walking away with the, the brine that we need. Just as a quick follow-up, that water tank, was that what had to be repaired? When you mentioned one of the major repairs being a water tank on one of the trucks?
No, that was a water pump out of the engine in the cooling system in a truck.
Thanks.
That water tank that we actually purchased a few years ago, being dual-purpose, we actually used that to fill the street sweepers whenever we utilized a street sweeping program, spring and fall, so we won't tap a hydrant out on the field. Would you, we take a single water source from at the garage and haul it up to the sweepers.
So can I, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on that also?
Sure.
So last year, Nick had suggested us looking into the brine utilizing the City of Worcester. They've been gracious enough for us to use it as an experiment. And so what we, we, we were gonna do a two-year pilot pro, pro, program and then give a report back to the board. Last year, we started it a little bit too late in the season and this year was not a very good brine season. Actually, I think we were only out twice, if I'm not mistaken, using the brine. The rest of the storms were either not conducive to the brine, whether it was too warm or too wet prior to either icing or snow. So we will hold off on doing a report until probably after next year when we have a little bit more data on how well it succeeded. When we did it last year, we were experimenting on ourselves on concentration of the brine, what streets to put it on, when we should put it down, what type of storm. So last year was more of experimental and this year we were hoping that we would get a little bit better at practice at it. But the results that we have seen have been very positive. We just want to give a deeper report back to the board once we get a little bit more data.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from, or the comments from members of the board? No? Okay, well, Mr. Repeska. Oh, I'm sorry. Was that Mr. Kane?
Yeah, sorry about that. I just want to thank him and his crew for the ongoing work and the willingness to try a new approach to some of the old challenges that faced us, so thank you.
Thank you, yes. I was actually going to say the same thing. Appreciate all the time that your people have to spend out on the roads during those storms. We had that long-duration storm that went on for what, over two days or around two days? That, that, that's a tough, that's a tough shift. You guys continue to do a great job and we appreciate it, so thank you. And hopefully next winter, maybe not more conducive to your experiment with the, with the brine, but hopefully it's as mild as this one was. Think we'd appreciate that, that a lot more than having a cold snowy winter, but we'll see how it goes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else, I'll move on to item 12, which is to review an act on a water policy for lead and copper testing program that were required to do with the state. I did, I, I read this wrong, but it's an incentive program for the, for the residents who actually have to collect the water samples for us. So, Mr. Rowley, did you want to explain that or who's gonna do that?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead. Thank you.
So this is an idea that we came across in some conversations with Mass DEP. And the lead and copper rule dates back to 1991. And throughout the years, the town of Shrewsbury has been required to collect samples in homes constructed between 1983 and 1985. And our results have shown favorable. And we were on a reduced program for many years, which required to collect 30 samples every three years, which we found with the construction of the treatment plant and it subsequently going online in October of 2018, our program went back to the normal requirement. We are now required to collect 60 samples twice a year. We've been through two rounds of sampling. Have been favorable. Unfortunately, the first round, we fell short of collecting the 60 samples, which ended in June of 2019. The second round, we did collect all 60 samples in the end of December. What we're learning in the program is we certainly have a great group of residents who are cooperative. However, it's not necessarily the most important aspect of their day. And it requires us to follow up several times. So in talking with a few other community, we're offering an incentive program to just make it a little bit more one thing to note about this program, in addition to being limited to the number of houses because of the, the time they were constructed, they cannot have a filtration system and the water has to sit stagnant in the house for six hours. So it's easy for folks to forget as time goes on, you know, overnight or whenever they plan to do it. So in talking with Marlboro and Auburn, again, they have really highlighted that this has been a big help. So I am asking the board as the water commissioners to consider an incentive of $25 off the participants' bill if they submit a water sample with all the required paperwork and it meets the requirements of the program.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? Mr. Holland, Mr. Mizikar? I think, I think Mr. Rowley covered it pretty well. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments on this program?
I have a question. Oh, sorry, you can go first, Mr. Kane.
All right, I think it's a great idea. We're not getting it. What a great market-based incentive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cassavian?
I was just wondering, Mr. Rowley, what's the consequence of not getting enough participation?
So we'll get a notice of non-compliance initially, which we will have to advertise in the newspaper, letting all of our customers know. And then after that, I am not sure and I don't want to find out. Safety issue, you know, we want to have good data for our customers. It's really important to us. So I mean, we strive to, to hit the, the goal, so it's not something we want to fall short on.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one comment to that?
Sure.
So Ms. Cassavian, the one ramification is what we're hoping for is once we get three successful rounds of sampling, that what we're hoping for is once we get three successful rounds of sampling, that we to the reduce sampling of three, 30 samples in a three-year period. So we finished the first round in December. We're hoping to finish the next two this year, and then we can petition. If, if we do not meet the requirement, we will go back to starting, having to do the first one all over again. So one goal is to try to get into the reduce, which may, is a lot less work, obviously, and it's just 30 samples every three years is what we're aiming to get to.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to add? No? Mr. Rowley, we were only required to do this because of the construction of the new plant. It wasn't because we found or D E P found a problem with either the copper or the lead, correct?
Correct. It's my understanding that we didn't change any processes, processes. In, in fact, Mr. Tzazeski petitioned D E P to acquire this based on his knowledge of the system and the chemistry of the water. But with the new, the new plant going online, they, they want the data just to confirm.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Mizikar, are you asking this evening for us to vote this policy in of providing the $25 incentives to those participants?
Yes, we are. And it is timely as it relates to the June deadline for this round of testing.
Okay, so would the motion be to implement the policy with the $25 incentive to their participants in the sampling?
Yes, it would, if you're comfortable doing that.
Sure. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Heard something there. Do you have a second?
Second.
Sorry, second, second, second. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so again, voice vote, Ms. Casavian?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Tamia?
Aye.
And Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing that forward and hopefully it's going to help you out.
Great. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is to discuss the formation of the Police and Municipal Campus Building Committee. Mr. Mizikar, do you want to take us through that discussion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, as members of the board, traditionally in the town and like most towns, whenever we're undertaking a major, potentially undertaking a major project, at the end of the feasibility, end of the feasibility study, we create a building committee to manage the project directly. Normally, that building committee is created through an act of town meeting because town meeting has the authorization to enable us to borrow funds and go into debt for such a, a project. However, given the extraordinary circumstances that we're in and the inability to have town meeting on May 18th, as we originally planned, and the uncertainty as to whether and when we'll actually hold town meeting, I'm asking for the Board of Selectmen to take this uncommon step in appointing the building committee directly. I have used a very common format to the membership of the committee. There'd be nine individuals representing, there'd be staff members that represent the various buildings that are under the feasibility study within the main municipal campus at 100 Municipal, excuse me, 100 Maple Avenue, including the town hall and the senior center, but most importantly, the police station. And along with those town staff members, there'd be a member of the Board of Selectmen and three members of the public at large appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So we follow the exact same format that we'd request action from town meeting from. But again, as we move towards a critical point within the feasibility study, I think it's very important to have public transparency and allow other people outside of town staff directly to be able to weigh in and support us during these efforts. So I am requesting that the Board of Selectmen, who have the authority to establish a building committee, do so this evening, made up of nine members to lead this project. They would have responsibility for managing the project, entering into contracts, and they would advise the Board of Selectmen on the funding needs for the project pursuant to other actions, including town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of the board? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes, Mr. Kane.
I don't have so much of a question as much as I would like to thank Kevin for bringing this forward. I think it's critically important that at this time, even though there's such uncertainty out there, that we continue full steam ahead. If you saw many, some of the actions of the House of Representatives on the federal level today, it seems like having a project that would be quote-unquote shovel-ready would be in our interest to do so because of much of the public financing concepts that are coming forward. Many of you have, over the years, have been part of conversations where we've said to the police that, well, if, if the state had a grant program that offered a high level of reimbursement, it probably would have dealt with the police station. But the fact of the matter is the Library Commission does, the M S B S, M S B A does, and therefore other projects got ahead of the police station. I think it's in our interest to continue full steam ahead in getting the project ready for financing either locally or through some local and federal financing source. So I want to thank the manager for continuing full steam ahead despite of everything that's going on around him.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Looks like somebody wanted to say something that I just read it wrong. I can see you, right? Okay, and so then I guess what we would do, and I, I agree with Mr. Kane. I, I think we've seen, we've seen the benefit of when we've, when we've had projects that were shovel-ready and the opportunities came up that we were able to take advantage of in the past. So Mr. Mizikar, you would like this done sooner than, rather than later because of the, the point that you're in, in the, in the process already, right?
Yes, that's correct. As I reported the last meeting, we're through the, the programming phase of the feasibility study where we basically identify bulk square footages and different office space sizes. And we're moving into some more critical action that I think lends itself to board interaction and transparency and oversight by members of the public at large.
Okay, so then the board, if the board agrees to this this evening, then we would put out basically an advertisement or a notice for the, to get applicants for the, it would be three people, three residents at large beyond the, the staff and somebody from the Board of Selectmen, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So board members, I think we have agreement on this is, is, am I understanding correctly that we agree that we should move ahead on this?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree that we should move ahead on this. We don't want to lose an opportunity to have the project be brought forward. The citizens of Shrewsbury, I agree with what Mr. Kane said about having something shovel-ready. It may not seem like the best time to bring forward a proj, a project or to keep working on a project. But I think that in this new situation that we find ourselves in, it's important that we keep moving forward with the goals of the community. And it's very clear to me that the community is looking for some sort of solution long-term for the police station. So I would be in support of forming, taking the steps necessary to form a building committee at this time.
Okay, I do. Mr. Mizikar, can we vote on creating the committee tonight?
Yes.
You have a charge here, correct?
There's a charge included in your packet and I'm just pulling the agenda back up.
It looks like the agenda says discuss the formation.
Does not say review and act. Since the board would need to reconvene in order to create the building committee, we could, if, with your approval, we could advertise and review and act at your next meeting.
Okay. How, how, how much time do you think we need to wait for responses? How soon do you want to move on this? Do you want, I don't know if we can do it in two weeks. We can certainly try.
Yeah, I, I think we, the benefit of being able to form the committee with its appointments on May 26 means that we would be in line with the project schedule that we had planned, which would have been creating the building committee or filling the building committee at the first meeting after town meeting. So we will get the advertisements out before the end of the week and keep you advised of the applicants as they come in.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Not for me.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on it?
I miss the chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
As we know from our reference to deal with the, what, an assistant or an associate member of the zoning board of appeals, the only thing I would caution is that, you know, not all of us will know every good person who puts in for this and trying to get even a parking lot conversation going with somebody in today's age may complicate things for two weeks. I'm also trying, but I do think we also have to be ready if one of our colleagues is not, is not comfortable voting and moving ahead within two weeks. It could occur.
Right.
I caution every time.
No, I, I agree, but we could, we, I think we should try. I mean, if we're not ready, we'll postpone it till the next meeting. But let's see what happens. And certainly I agree with you, if we're not ready, we shouldn't, we shouldn't vote those members. But we could at the next meeting vote to establish the committee and adopt the charge and at least keep the process going. But so I, I agree with what you're saying and, and we'll, we'll take it a step at a time. Okay. Next order of business is to review and discuss a draft donation by law. I had alerted the board a few months ago that I was going to work on this to try to bring something forward to try to make sure that those donation collection boxes are kept emptied and, and the area around them clean. A lot of towns, at least through my research, I discovered have similar issues under certain circumstances with these donation bins. And as you know, residents in town have complained about a couple of them. One in particular, although the, the owner of the donation box actually is, is, has tried to keep that clean, but it's very difficult. In any event, I researched half a dozen or so bylaws that other towns in the area have to try to find something that was concise and did what we wanted it to do, what I think we'd want it to do, which basically keep the sites clean. What I did find was that none of these things are, are brief. Just because of the nature of the issues that they need to address, two and three pages is actually not long lengthwise, unfortunately. But this one was based on something, I believe, which seemed to be the most concise. The one change that I did send to out to the board, I think it was this afternoon because I got some comments from staff today and talked with Mr. Mizikar. And we agreed that this actually could be handled by the Board of Selectmen's Office. There aren't a lot of these, these bins, is maybe a dozen. The building inspector is of the opinion that they just have too much stuff going on to take on trying to monitor these. So the draft that is currently, hopefully for you, is the same draft, but says that you apply to the Board of Selectmen. It's really going to be more of a paperwork thing and then just approving the license. So in any event, I, I think the major parts of the bylaw as it's proposed and as other towns have written them is these collection bins are not allowed in residential zones, although this is not a zoning bylaw. It's a general bylaw, not allowed in residential zones. And there's one other thing I was going to say about that. Oh, they're not allowed, they would not be allowed on vacant lots, vacant properties. So and the, and the reason for that is, if you notice, the ones that are problematic, the few that are, are on properties that are not occupied. Ones in the lot shopping centers, although currently there's a problem with one of them, generally have stayed very clean because the landlords who have tenants and active customers don't want to see, you know, an unsightly and messy collection area. So anyways, having said that, I don't know if members of the board have any questions, but try to answer them or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kane.
Yeah, I give you credit for tackling it. We've talked about it at different fits and stats over the years that I've served with on the board. So thank you for tackling with it. I would encourage you to, you know, let's move it on. A further review by the planning board or get some other takes on this and then move it forward. It's certainly required desperately where it is required. And as you've said, some people actually maintain them quite successfully. And then there are those that are rather sloppy and become annoying eyesore. So, so thank you for your time in addressing it. And I would support it and encourage it to be moved forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anybody see anything that they, they'd like changed or added or?
I have one question.
Sure.
Do we know how many bins there are located in town?
Kind of like, you know, back of the, back of the hand is about, it's less than 12 currently. They seem to fluctuate a little bit, but there aren't that many, actually, that I, that I've been able to determine. And, and from the people I talked to in the community who were concerned about them, I don't, I, I think it's around a dozen. So the permitting part of it, I don't think is going to be very labor-intensive. And typically in general bylaws, we don't, we don't go, we wouldn't be going out and doing bin patrol as we've gotten complaints or somebody has noticed that they were messy. That's when we would try to address them. There's not, these things typically are, you know, very, I don't know what the right word is, but not actively enforced where somebody's going out every, every couple of days and checking. It's, it's more responding to what town staff sees and, and resident complaints, so.
I don't, I don't think we'll have a problem knowing when there's a bin that's not being emptied on time because I've also received plenty of complaints and I've spoken with Mr. Mizikar. And I think that this, this bylaw will give the ability to put some teeth behind the request to please clean up your bin. And so I'm really glad that you're bringing it forward and I definitely support the effort. One thing I noticed when reading through it is that there's multiple places that talk about making sure that it's cleaned or emptied weekly. And I don't know if it has to be in multiple. And I don't know if it has to be in multiple places, but that might just streamline things a little if it's only said one time. That's pretty much all I noticed.
Actually, I, I noticed that myself and. Mr. Cahill has reviewed this and, and. I, I was going to ask him to take a look at that. I think there is some duplication in there. And it probably not needed. So I agree with you. If we can shorten it up and still get the same message out. I think it would be better. So I'll work with Mr. Cahill on that. Any, anyone else? Okay, there is a. Certainly, we're going to. Have to go through the hearing process on this with the finance committee. Maybe the planning board is a general by law. I don't recall if we have to do that or not, but. We'll continue to work on it and. Solicit comments perhaps at some point if. The circumstances allow when we get it in the final form, we could have a hearing on it ourselves. But. So we'll, we'll look at making those, those changes. And, and keep it moving along. There is a placeholder for this on the warrant for the annual town meeting. So. You know, hopefully when we, when we do sign the warrant. This will be, it'll be in the shape to be able to put it on, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, who is this?
Jay Dean Garnett.
This not, not typically, but because this isn't a public hearing, but if you have one comment, sure.
I just had a resident ask me that they were under the assumption that the pink bags were replacing. The need for donation bins in town. And I think there, there are two different entities in a way, and I just wanted to confirm or clarify whether or not this was the case.
No, the, actually, the pink bags was. Was something that. Actually, Ms. Los and myself had come across and have been looking into. And the, and the reason for that was to. Actually, the pink bags take more textiles. Theoretically, they take more than clothes. And the other thing was to make it more convenient. For, for the residents to be able to. Take that stuff out of the waste stream. And at the same time, that would. It would reduce our cost of disposal. And there's a minimal. Fee or whatever they call it that we, we're paid so much a ton for what's collected. So it was really to take it out of the waste stream, trying to get the recycling and the trash. Numbers down and it was really a convenience issue. It was, it was never to replace the bins and, and other towns. And any municipalities that actually took that on, the pink bags. Didn't do it to eliminate those things. It was really to get the stuff out of the waste stream more conveniently. For, for the residents.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to say thank you so much for taking. As you know, I've been the biggest voice in your ear about this. And I just really wanted to thank you and, and Selectman Cassavant for really, you know, taking this head on and I just wanted to say I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to next order of business, which is. Review the budget process. Mr. Mizikar is going to take us through. What the budget process could be given the state of the. Whole situation. Because of the COVID nineteen virus. So Mr. Mizikar, would you like to take us through that?
I would, yes. And I'm sharing my screen. I wanted to update the board with where we are with the redevelopment of the budget. As you recall, at the last meeting, we walked through some pretty dire revenue estimates based on prior recessionary times that the town has experienced. And we all are seeing the unemployment numbers for both the Commonwealth and the nation as a whole doubling. The most recent recessions over the past several decades. And, you know, nearing levels not seen since the Great Depression. So with that in mind. And knowing that we're facing budget constraints or revenues could be, you know, anywhere from. Two to almost five million dollars less than we had originally anticipated this spring. Departments are currently re, running through three different scenarios where they're asked to reduce. The budgets that they submitted, which were reviewed by the board and the finance committee. Down on a bottom line basis by three and a half percent, five point one five percent and six and three quarter percent. Now, this will have extremely significant consequences to our operations, especially the higher two levels. We'll do everything we can to eliminate the need to reduce budgets that far. Most budgets would not be able to be reduced that far without having an impact on the level of staffing. And for some departments. These cuts would be catastrophic because as you'll recall, there are some relatively small departments that are critical to our operations. That have very small expenditures outside of staffing levels, especially in the financial areas, which is critical to our operations. Along with the numeric exercise and analysis that these department, that all departments are doing. They're developing narrative impacts and identifying not only where they're not, will not be able to achieve their previous goals, but. The negative consequences of these impacts, especially where staffing has to come into play for these reductions. As I alluded to during the last meeting. The state budget process is critical in understanding the financial position that the town will be in. For fiscal year twenty one. State aid is our second largest revenue source outside of property taxes. For fiscal projection one, we had estimated twenty seven and a half million dollars coming in from the state. And we modeled. Estimates based on the prior recessions where we could experience anywhere from five and a half to eight and a half percent reduction in that state aid. There certainly remains a level of uncertainty. With in the state budget process and. I'm concerned and would not recommend that the board or we move forward with adopting a full annual. Budget for fiscal year twenty one unless we have a solid amount of information, at least out of the House of Representatives. To understand what type of level of state aid we will provide. And I see. The challenges on both sides. I see us wanting to be very conservative and do the right thing and not overestimate what we have. There are certainly negative consequences for cutting too far. Especially, you know, in those critical areas that really can't afford to eliminate staff. And there's a cyclical aspect and a timing aspect, especially as it relates to the school department on how they prepare for. The upcoming school year. They certainly have enough. Challenges ahead with the type of educational environment that they'll be operating through. Layering staffing uncertainty and reducing even a half FTE or. A full FTE has a significant impact on their planning activities, increasing classroom sizes. And other coverages and educational opportunities for students. With that being said, on the screen, I was pleased to see earlier this week that the Department of Revenue has published guidance. For the law that was passed through chapter fifty three, the Acts of two thousand and twenty. That enables towns operate on a continuing appropriation basis, so called one twelfth budgets. That means we have the ability to put a monthly budget in place. Based upon our actual expenditures that we anticipate for fiscal year twenty. And not just replicate what we did in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. There's many new costs and different costs, some higher, some lower. That we'll experience for fiscal year twenty one in comparison to fiscal year twenty. And the provisions of both the law and the guidance provided by the Department of Revenue would allow us to make. A request on actual expenditures. In order to do that. It requires Board of Selectmen approval. Certainly as staff, we would take the, the line share of the work and bring the board proposal forward. No action would be required of town meeting, which is what is needed right now, given the, the, the public health challenges. And but once town meeting does occur, it immediately eliminates anything that was approved for the one twelfth budget. Appropriation regardless of how far we are into the year. And it's not just a single month that we'd be able to do this. We can only submit for one month at a time, but we're able to do. Several months should the state of emergency remain in place. And we not have the ability to put a budget in place through town meeting action. Through the Department of Revenue's guidance, they are encouraging municipalities to not wait to do this. They're. Almost asking us to take a belts and suspenders approach and submit a continuing appropriation budget. To them. Just in case we are unable to hold town meeting. As you know, it's our plan to set a town meeting date at your next meeting on May twenty sixth. I'll refer back to the state aid challenges if we do not have solid numbers from the state. Simply because they're unable to be able to deliberate appropriately and have the information that they feel that they need to have to set a state budget or state. Revenue estimates. I don't think we should. Prepare to move forward with an actual town meeting until we have that information in hand. So I propose to you that no later than June fifth, so we could handle this at the May twenty sixth board meeting. Or perhaps a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen the following week, that we would submit a continuing appropriation budget to the state for July of. Two thousand and twenty, the first month of fiscal year. Two thousand and twenty one. So that's really the comments that I wanted to make on the fiscal year twenty one budget process. We still have a lot of things to work out. Those scenarios that are being run by departments are due to me no later than this Friday. And many departments have already submitted them. It's hard to look at because there are real challenges as I had mentioned before. I stand ready to answer any questions that the board may have on this option of moving forward with a budget. We're simply not ready and don't have the data that we need to move forward at this point with a full town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any question, the comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, I think the manager is once again charting an appropriate course. Although I do think we, we need to be very expeditious in eliminating any costs that we can. That might be related to. Very nice to have or, or seasonal. Activities and seasonal related expenditures. I'd see no reason to move ahead with the budget. The Commonwealth has given us flexibility. As the manager has outlined, I think we should take full advantage of that at our next meeting. And work with him on any reductions. That might be necessary as opposed to worrying about. A twelve, a twelve month budget, given the uncertainty that is out there, depending on which newspaper you read or which. News outlet you follow. You're either hearing of a deep V recovery or now I've just read an article on the swoosh. That will be a long laggardly recovery. Who knows? So we should take full advantage of our. Ability to approach this in an incremental fashion as outlined.
And thank you. Anyone, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LaBose?
Not to prolong things too long, but I think this is absolutely the right approach. We should take advantage of every flexibility that's in front of us. And make no decision until we need to. Not to, not to do it after we need to, but there's absolutely no good reason to go for a whole budget right now. So I'm entirely supportive of this approach.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Kestrel.
So we can keep doing this one twelfth budget approach until a town meeting occurs.
That is correct.
And I am, I'm definitely in favor of. Looking at a one twelfth budget as opposed to the work involved in trying to create a budget with information that really just isn't. In existence yet. This is a, it seems to me a better use of, of your time, Mr. Mizikar and. And also I think just. A more manageable way to handle the budget and to handle the possibility that we may not be able to gather for town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mizikar, just. A clarification. We can do this one twelfth if we don't have a town meeting, correct?
Yes, that is correct. As soon as you have town meeting. The one twelfth budget that is in place is immediately eliminated and you revert to the town meeting adopted budget.
Okay, so. It would be a twelfth until we had a town meeting and at that town meeting, we would have to adopt the budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and it is the. Is the, are the time intervals. Such that this, we can keep doing this one twelfth so-called budget. Until this state of emergency is lifted?
That is correct and town meeting is able to be scheduled up to thirty days beyond the expiration or the. Cancellation of the state of emergency. So it would provide plenty of time for us to pivot from a one twelfth budget. To the full budget of the year. Regardless of whenever that occurs, so have sufficient notice. So I wouldn't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I, I was just going to say, you know, as we move into the next conversation about the budget or about town meeting. You know, we can work through some of those scenarios at that as well.
Okay, then, then I'll, I'll wait until then. I, I do agree with everybody else. I think this is the right, right approach. I, I don't think it's even realistic to try to. Put a budget together if we haven't got any idea of what the state funding is going to be, let alone our own projections going forward. So. I'd encourage you to, to work on this and get it, get it ready so that. We can act on it. So. Is that all you have on this part? You want to move on to the, to the warrant or do you have anything else to cover on this right now?
I don't have anything else specifically on the budget. It all ties together with town meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Samia.
Just a couple of quick questions, just to clarify. When we say one twelfth budget, it doesn't necessarily mean one twelfth of the fiscal twenty budget, correct? The materials are pretty clear until the end, but just to confirm that.
That is correct. It actually can't be less than one twelfth of the prior year budget. That's what the legislation says. But given our debt service requirements, we would be beyond that, even if we reduce operational costs. So our net increase would, with debt service will automatically put us above and beyond our FY twenty one. Or excuse me, our FY twenty number.
Okay, then two other quick questions, which you may not know the answer to. There's not going to be a review process with this. There's no second look at what we're doing or any looking at the guidance that came out in this, this bulletin. Is there any risk that we approve it and then they say, well, no, you're besides one twelfth that they?
Excuse me, yeah, the, the. The onus falls on the municipality to do the right thing, obviously, which we're going to do and create a budget. You know, in a scenario that we can afford. We would submit the actual numbers in the state's financial system of record, which is called Gateway. There's. You know, but it's, it's not like they're going to come in and review and say, why did you do? Why are you planning this expenditure or that expenditure?
And then one more quick question, if I may, the, and one, one twelfth is flexible, so we can do one number. I assume it doesn't have to be the same number every month. Because we're going to have obviously timing encumbered expenses certain months and the like contractual obligations.
Yeah, absolutely. They, they've through the calls that I've been on, they're encouraging us to create realistic budgets on a month by month basis. Yeah, absolutely. They they've through the calls that I've been on, they're encouraging us to create realistic budgets on a month-by-month basis.
Okay, and then just the last comment, I agree with what everyone says. Um time is our ally here. Um but I would also encourage that we meet as often as possible. At that to talk through um the information as we get it. Because we know that any decision we make for twenty one is gonna roll through twenty two, and in tandem, I think we're gonna have to take a lot of this together as soon as we get the information. That's it. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um so uh. Okay, Mister Mizikad, do you want to move on to the um talking about the town meeting warrant?
Yes, please.
Sure.
So with regards to the town meeting warrant, um and date, time, and location aspects of that, we are seriously. Considering and and recommending a few things. First and foremost, as we discussed at the last meeting, our target date, if we have enough information to actually hold town meeting. And move forward with confidence at your next meeting on May twenty six would be to set the date for June twenty second. However, I think we put the town in the best position if we do not have all the information that we need to pass the budget to set. Town meeting date as June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. That is the last date that the board has the authority to have the meeting. And upon the establishment of that date, um. The um control as to whether we're gonna have town meeting or not falls into the primary hands of the moderator with the advice and assistance of public health officials, public safety officials. And the Board of Selectmen. So what the June thirtieth date will provide is the longest duration that we would have until we'd have to make. A next decision on when we would need to reschedule the meeting for. So um I believe it's within five days of that day, the moderator would have to take action. Um to schedule the meeting up to thirty days beyond that date, as long as the state of emergency is still in place. So I think that. Those eight extra days could come in handy during our scheduling process in the future. Um our bylaws require the meeting on a weekday not to be held anytime bef- before seven P M. Um one other change that we are seriously considering and working through. Does not finalize um is having. The uh meeting located at the high school. It provides us with several other o- opportunities that Oak Middle School does not. Um regardless of the location, our plan had been to operate from multiple rooms. However, the idea was presented from the public facilities, public building staff to consider holding. The uh meeting within the field house of the high school, and a plan has been sketched out. Where it appears, uh and we'll vet this a little bit further, we could appropriately space both staff. And town meeting members with full contingency on hand to have all two hundred and forty members. And significant amount of staff and uh public non-town meeting uh members on hand. Within the field house and spaced and seated at least six feet apart with adequate aisles. For people to access microphones and make comments while remaining six feet away from each other. So um we're actively considering that, and it may very well be our recommended place. I've consulted with town uh council to determine, should we establish a particular location? If we'd be able to amend the agenda like we do under normal situations prior to the meeting to change the venue, and he um. Has affirmed during that conversation that we'd be able to do that, uh and we will double check on that before we actually establish it. My concern there is uh a full vetting with. The superintendent and high school um leadership team, should we move into a situation where town meeting is not held. Until the fall and uh in school. Uh instruction is ongoing. I want to have the least impact on um their operations as possible and obviously setting up. The field house in the manner that I previously described is not as simple as town meeting members walking into an auditorium, so. We'll just have to um be careful with how we were the original warrants and how we take actions um every change thereafter. With regards to the warrant itself, um we have proposed a forty one uh, we we currently have forty one articles that would need consideration. They break down twenty of them being financial, nine of them being bylaw amendments, six of them being land disposition, acquisition, and relating art, related articles. Four of them fall into a miscellaneous category, and two of them. Include funding for outside entities, which are partners of ours in the community, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, only consignment commission. Um of course, the policy decisions and funding of those. Different entities is still up in the air, but you know, as far as uh standard actions and needed actions that we would normally bring forward to an annual town meeting. Uh they still do exist. When I look at the warrant. Uh with regard to the direct and specific need to take action on items that are critical to our operations. I've identified seventeen of those articles uh as being critical and twenty four being non-critical. Um and we would move forward with the sequence of a warrant. Uh or could move forward with the sequence of a warrant that has all critical articles first and non-critical articles second. And I strongly favor taking the approach of footing putting all forty one articles on a single warrant. And allowing town meeting to determine whether they continue um to move forward through all forty one articles or um. Continue the meeting to a later date and time under the advisement of the moderator. Um I think we'd run into more challenges if we created a warrant. Um with only the seventeen critical articles and then delayed. Um the meeting until a later date, we're actually able to meet under relatively normal conditions. I think we would regret not having all forty one articles on there. And be forced to call a special town meeting with the annual, creating complications that we could just avoid by putting all articles on the first warrant. Uh and taking action to actually hold the town meeting when we're able to properly address the business needs of the town through town meeting. I'd be happy to just briefly run through all forty one of those articles, and I've identified um the i- items in the red tone as um the critical ones. So um I won't spend a lot of time, because we already went through the vast majority of these articles back at your first meeting in March. Um I will note that there are several articles that we've pulled out that um do not make financial sense or are not a a need of. Of the town any longer uh as we stand here on May twelfth. So um you'll notice that the critical articles are all uh financial based. There could be uh, you know, some arguments or or questions as to whether something's critical or not. But I really had the lens of, do we need to take this action to operate in fiscal year twenty one? Um at the annual town meeting, or could it be delayed until another time and still operate the town? Um to the fullest extent possible without taking those actions. So again, since we've already discussed the content of these articles thoroughly in other meetings, I guess I would just uh. Ask the chairman if um there would be any questions from board members on the warrant itself, or how we may proceed with it.
Sure. Um does anybody wanna go through these one at a time, or just ask questions on a specific article? Um if you have one.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Kane.
I think the uh way the manager has prioritized them is an effective outline. I don't need to go through any of them, as I think we have discussed them in the past. Uh and they're obvious uh in his outline as to what's critical and non-critical. And I agree with him that we should, in fact, have. Earlier on, I thought we should only go with the critical ones, but I believe for the reasons he stated, it is wiser for us to have the entire list. Approved and ready to go, and then we'll see how it makes uh through town meeting. Certainly, we need to deal with a few of them. Uh others are good to deal with, otherwise they wouldn't even be on the warrant. So I'm ready to move forward this evening.
Okay, um anybody else?
Um I agree with Mister Kane. That this seems to be um. A well-thought-out plan for moving forward with the town meeting warrant. Um and I think that if we are able to convene, it gives us the opportunity to get as much business done as possible, and also provides us with the option of um. Looking at the most critical um articles and holding on the ones that can be held until it's safe to address them.
Okay, um anyone else? I think, I think we're all in agreement. Mister Mister Mizikad, do you have anything else on the on the uh warrant for this evening, on the topic of the warrant?
I do not have anything else on the topic of the warrant, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so um then um at our next meeting, um you would have a warrant actually prepared for us to vote and sign?
Yes, I just, and I know I said it, but I just wanna be clear. I really think, or I have a strong feeling that if we do not have. Um numbers from either a joint. House and Senate Ways and Means Committee, or the House Ways and Means Committee at least, that we should schedule the meeting for June thirtieth. Um in anticipation of actually just delaying it and continuing it.
Okay, when we get to that point, um to make that decision, um uh. Where would where does the moderator come into this? Um. I I think we need to in- involve the moderator in the discussion to make sure that. We're all in agreement, because we set it for the thirtieth, and. He's not in agreement in how we're doing it, and it could be a problem. I don't anticipate that, but I just think we. Um especially in in terms of uh. Uh continuing, continuing it in the process and um. It's, so I guess, would would we be having discussion with with the moderator um. At the next meeting or before the next meeting?
I think, I think both, yes. I think we should invite him to the meeting on the twenty sixth, but obviously, we can work through. The various scenarios with him um to make sure that we're all in agreement with what this new law says and how we'd handle it moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Um and then um I think um we've discussed this, but. Are you going to uh uh set the the warrant to prioritize the most critical things up front? And and moving to the less critical at the end? So not, I know the the first thing is um, you know, the right and how of fund, which we probably leave there, because it takes about a minute. But um things like uh like that, that aren't as important would go towards the end of the meeting. So if we do decide to have a meeting and uh we get to a point where people say, okay, enough, we've covered the most basic stuff. And the other less important stuff um could be held off?
Yes, that would be the approach we would take.
Um because I I think that would be better than than keeping the traditional format and then asking to take articles out of order, because I think it'll get confusing.
Agreed.
Um, okay, is there anything else on that? Um members? Okay, thank you for all that work, Mister Mizikad. Um, okay, next order of business is to review and act um. To appoint one associate member to the zoning board of appeals for a one-year term to expire on March thirty one. Um anybody have any comments, uh? Questions, motions? Move forward on this this evening, or what?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Miss Cassian.
Um I was very impressed with the quality of applicants. Um I think that. All five of the people that applied for this position um have qualifications that would make them well-suited. For the role. Uh I also would encourage those that aren't appointed to consider um other ways in which they can contribute. To the town, perhaps running for town meeting. I know there are many vacancies uh right now in different precincts for town meeting members. It's a little trickier because um of having to run a write-in campaign at this point in time, but um. I would also think that we would wanna keep any of these resumes on file uh for whoever isn't appointed. Uh in the event that we have other vacancies on other boards that they might be well-suited for. Um I know that in the past, we've pushed this um off a bit, but I do believe that um it's probably time to. Um appoint someone for this vacancy. And so I would like to offer uh Patrick Fulan for appointment as a Z D A associate. Member at this time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, um there being none, um again, roll call vote, Miss Cassian.
Hi.
Mister Lebo.
Hi.
Uh Mister Kane.
Hi.
And Mister Samia.
Hi.
And Mister DePaulo, hi. Okay, um but I I agree with you, Miss Cassian. I think there's a lot of talent there, and we're always looking for people on board. On on different boards and commissions, and hopefully, we can engage some of those other uh folks who um who had applied. Um to uh maybe participate on on another board or commission if the opportunity comes up. Okay, um. I believe we're down to correspondence, correct? Um, okay, um, okay, um item eighteen is an email dated April twenty fourth from Joanne Hellstoski. For uh Birchbrush Road, um dissatisfaction with the efficiency and lack of effort by waste management. Um it was an issue with uh um. Uh cardboard, um what either some of it, if I I don't recall, but some of it or all of it was not picked up. Um uh on the appropriate day. Um I believe somebody has addressed that, Mister Mizikad. Um with the resident and waste management, is that correct?
That's what I'm understanding, yes.
Okay, um. Okay, um item nineteen is an email dated April twenty seventh from Kevin. Krasnicki, uh C M R P C, um regarding a public meeting notice of May sixth, um so noted. Item uh twenty is an email dated April twenty seventh from State Rep um Kane uh. Regarding formal house session uh remote guidelines, uh they they also are are doing some of their work remotely now. Item twenty. Yeah, I have myself. Item twenty one is an email dated April twenty seventh from uh State Rep Kane regarding. Uh Moody sees positives in uh Munich cash uh fiscal flexibility law, um. Which is, which is a plus. Um item twenty two is an email dated April twenty eighth from State Representative. Kane regarding the Baker-Polito administration extending non-essential business closures to May eighteenth. And announcing the reopening advisory board, um which is working as we speak. Uh so noted, item twenty three is an email dated um April twenty eighth from William Gully of six ninety-six Main Street regarding. Uh junk cars um on a property um on South Street. Um those vehicles have been there for. Quite, quite a long time, um as long as I can remember. Um um. I think we need to have somebody look into it, and um I'd ask them, I think we should ask the manager to see who would be the appropriate. Entity to um look into that uh situation. Is that okay, Mister Mizikad? Let us know.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you. Um item twenty four is an email dated uh April twenty ninth from Joe Suez, Superintendent of Schools, to the school committee. Um regarding pay continuity of staff during the COVID nineteen pandemic school closure, so noted, item uh. Twenty five is an email dated May first from David Kennely. Uh twenty-one, twenty-three, Abid Drive regarding the uh water shortage determination. Um had comments about um us putting in the water restrictions um as we do every year, and. Um I believe either uh Miss Lass or uh Mister Holland uh responded to the gentleman on why we have to do that. So noted, item twenty six is an email dated May first. From the Town and School Scholarship Committee regarding the twenty twenty scholarship recipients. Uh there were twenty-five recipients this year. Um of five hundred dollar scholarships. Um so congratulations to all of them, and thank you to the committee for uh. All of the work that it's did to um actually be able to um award those scholarships to so many people. Um item twenty, I'm I'm working on a uh. A previous agenda, so I wanna make sure I get the numbers right. Um twenty-seven is an email dated May fourth from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding um. Senate twenty-six seventy-three regarding municipal government legislation. That is addressing the idea of reducing quarms for town meeting. The, the, the quarm that's needed in virtual town meetings, among some other things. That is, I understand, in the House at this time, so noted. Item twenty-eight is an email, I mean, a letter dated May fifth from Jane and Ed Hedberg, Thirty-Four Patriot Lane, regarding nuisance dogs on Forty-Seven Memorial Drive. I'm gonna note that, because the next one, twenty-nine, is a letter dated May fifth from Rob and Dev Luke, Eight Twenty-Eight Patriot Lane, regarding the nuisance dogs at Memorial Drive. This is a continuing issue with these residents being disturbed by dogs barking on the house that's up in front of them on Memorial Drive. We did get a report from the animal control officer that, I don't know if everybody has seen, but I think we should put that on the agenda to possibly act on for the next meeting. It's more, it's a more complicated situation than, than I had realized. Item thirty is an email dated May sixth from Kevin Miseskar regarding House Forty-Five Forty-Seven, which is an act authorizing and accelerating transportation investment, where Mr. Miseskar asked Senator Moore to to work to keep one point four million dollars that Representative Kane had been able to get into the House bill to actually rebuild the Tobin Hill Bridge. Hopefully, that funding will become available, and we can, we can do that work. And item thirty-one is a letter dated May eight from Nick Petka, Highway Division Manager, to Kevin Miseskar, town manager, with a street sweeping report, so noted. I believe that that is it for this evening. Am I correct? Do you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, did I miss it, or has the cuckoo clock been disabled?
Oh, the cuckoo clock has been relegated to another room in the House.
Well, people across town were, were wondering, so I wanted to make that perfectly clear before the evening ended. Thank you very much.
Well, we can put it up for the next meeting. It's very easy to include it back in. Actually, it would have gone off, it would have gone off three times for this meeting, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Anyways.
Possibly you could donate it to the selectmen's room, and we could share it.
Help us keep better track of time, I guess. In any event, so I don't believe there's any other business before the word this evening, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Catherine?
Hi.
Mr. LaBose?
Hi.
Kane?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Apollo, hi. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and stay safe up there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Goodbye.